Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight to our Tuesday, February ninth, regular Board of Directors meeting. There's, I'd like to announce at this time, Governor Inslee's proclamation 2028 in response to the COVID-19 outbreak temporarily suspends portions of Open Public Meeting Act. The proclamation requires that all attendance at open public meeting not take place in person but occur remotely, including the Board of Directors and the public. Our meeting this evening is conducted via Zoom audio webinar. And for me personally, I do this under protest because I'd rather be in person. So there you go. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'll do a roll call. I'm here. Yay. Director Jimmy Gronwald. She will not be with us tonight. She has a family emergency. Director Rob Perkins.
I'm here. Do you need a motion to excuse Jimmy?
Yeah, we'll do that after the roll call. Thank you. Director Julie Boca Negra.
Here, thanks, Dick.
Director Rachel Rogers.
Yeah.
Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
And administrative assistant Lori Stroll. Lori, are you here? Yes, I can see her.
Here.
Okay, Rob, go ahead. I'll take a motion.
I'd like to move that we excuse Jenny Gronwald from the meeting today.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, I'll take a vote. My thing's moving all around. I'm an I. Rob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Did I forget anybody? Seems, nope. When you're missing one, it feels like I'll make a hold that is there.
Yeah.
Okay, but now I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will all silently join me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and and liberty and justice for all. I don't know why I drew a blank on that. I've been saying it for fifty something years, but um. Okay, so next, we need to adopt our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for the regular Board of Directors meeting Tuesday, February night?
This is Julie. I move that we adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second?
I second Director Rogers.
Okay, we'll take a vote. I'm a yes. Rachel?
I.
Rob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have special recognition. The subject is Black History Month, a very important time right now for us all, for the country and our district in in light of everything that's been going on in our country. So who is going to be leading this discussion? Mike, is it you?
It's actually going to be Clarissa who's gonna, has a statement to share.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Why do we celebrate Black History? It's because of powerful Black women like Shirley Chisholm, Claudette Colvin, and Henrietta Lacks. We acknowledge and we celebrate. It's because of exceptional Black men like Benjamin O. Davis Senior, Alvin Ailey, and Jesse Owens. We acknowledge and we celebrate. It's because of brave Black children like Ruby Bridges, Emmett Till, Eddy Mae Collins, Cynthia Wesley, Carol Robertson, and Carol Denise McNair. We acknowledge and we celebrate. And it's because of historical events and places like Black Wall Street, the Harlem Renaissance, and historically Black colleges and universities across the nation, we acknowledge and we celebrate. These and many more people, places, and events shape the very fabric of our country. Black and African-American people have and continue to contribute to the success of our nation as well as our very own community. We bring with us an ancestry of kings and queens, beautiful lands, and extraordinary people. Our history is an important part of the American story and the Evergreen story. Learning about our past in its entirety helps everyone to improve upon that greatness and avoid repeating the ugliness. In honor of Black History Month, Evergreen Public Schools centers and celebrates the Black experience. We acknowledge the struggles and the successes, the oppression and the excellence of a phenomenal and multifaceted people. Our intelligence, talent, culture, and innovation continues to add value to our community. Evergreen Public Schools is a place where we welcome and value our Black community, and we urge you to join us as we continue to acknowledge and celebrate Black history. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarissa. That was nice. Okay. Was that, was that different than the proclamation that Rob is reading?
Yes, yeah, I think it is. I think Rob's reading the counselor proclamation. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. I got him one right on top of the other one there. Well, that was beautiful. Thank you, Clarissa. I really, really appreciated that. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say in regards to this?
I would just like to say that I'm really proud that all of our schools and our community are embracing this. And, you know, just, I loved what Clarissa had to say in her, in the statement, and then the things that she sent out, a couple of emails that were sent out to the community around this month and focusing on Black History Month. I know that we've been, you know, acknowledging and having part, you know, doing some of the curriculum throughout the months of February for years, but I like that this year we're highlighting it. It's on our reader boards. And, you know, that all the schools in our community can really embrace it. So thank you, Clarissa, for bringing that.
Rachel?
I would echo Julie's sentiments and Clarissa. That was beautiful what you read and prepared for tonight. I think it's so important to take a moment and honestly, an entire month is, is not enough time for anybody to learn the vast history of, you know, Black people, not just in America, but in the world, starting with the, you know, even the African diaspora and before. But there's so much to learn, so much to honor, and really so much for everybody in this country to celebrate with Black History Month. And I wish we could be in person so that we could be doing more activities in our schools with our students at this time. But hopefully next year we'll have some really interesting and different activities that we can use as educational tools and, and really celebrate all the wonderful and amazing people that make up our country and including especially those Black Americans.
Thank you, Rachel. Rob?
I can echo the thanks and there isn't an awful lot. There isn't an awful lot of, that I could, well, you know me, I could add, I could say there's not a lot to add and then add a bunch of stuff. But what I appreciate right now is that we usually get the documents that are read off in advance, and I'm pretty grateful right now that I got to have the impact of those beautiful words without having seen them in advance. And I wonder if you'd be willing to send a copy of them to me so that I can keep them. I, I was a little bit surprised at the quality of my education because I knew the names of many of the people that you read. And the paucity of not knowing the rest is kind of on my mind right now. And I hope to learn some more. I finally want to express great appreciation for the improvement that your leadership, Clarissa, has brought to Black History Month. The Week in Action, I don't think we've ever done anything like that before. And the poetry recitation con, I'm looking, I'm so looking forward to the poetry. I wanna, I wanna hear what those kids have to say. That kind of thing is, is, really lifts my spirits. And so I'm kind of sorry that the deadline is the end of the month because that makes, means I have to wait. But we have been seeing positive and negative feedback about these actions in our emails and with others, and the positive feedback is outnumbering the negative feedback. And it makes it very comfortable and hopeful for me to quote from that document we prepared last, last year late is because all lives matter, Black lives matter. And that's the way I see it, and I have you to thank for a lot of that perspective. Appreciate that. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Rob. I, um, I just feel full of gratitude to the work that's being done in our district to really reach out and to be understanding of other people's cultures and really truly wanting to embrace our fellow brothers and sisters because that's really, we're all in this together about our children. And we want to make sure that our, every child walks in our doors and every family walks in and they feel welcome and complete when they come in, that this is a place for them. And that's really important, I know, to everybody on, on this, on this Zoom call. Um, I'm hoping our poets had a chance to witness the two amazing moments that the young lady that read her, or had, I shouldn't say read, but acted out her poetry at the inauguration and at the Super Bowl. Oh, my gosh, she was just, she's incredible. And I'm, I, I've just lost her name off the top of my head, but oh, my gosh, anybody who hasn't seen her has missed out a lot. She's a bright star and it's, it just, that's way she embodies the poem is, is just so inspirational. So yeah, thank you, Clarissa, again, and we're just gonna keep plugging away on this and everybody will feel like we do.
Amanda Gorman.
Amanda Gorman. That's it. I knew, I knew it was an A name, but I couldn't remember. She is unbelievable. I just love her. So
To remember too.
Yeah, she's, she's a gem. We're gonna see a lot from her. Um, we also have some other special recognition, our school counselors. Always important to all of our students, key part of our school community. And they definitely deserve to be recognized. I know that Rob has a proclamation. Did you have anything you wanted to say prior to that, Mike?
Well, what I would say both on, if I go back to Black History Month for just a second. I've been around for a number of years in the district. And I think typically there's a proclamation that's read that we've done every year celebrating Black History Month. I think we're very fortunate to have Clarissa speak the way she did tonight, write, write that so that we can kind of recognize this differently, particularly in this first year that we've kind of officially brought Clarissa in to kind of do the work that we've been doing for the last year. So I'm thankful and grateful for that great, that great, the great words that you had tonight and that it means, I mean, it's always meant the same thing, but I feel like there's a lot more behind it as we move forward. So I appreciate that. With respect to counselors, what I would say is, you know, counselors, everybody that is in the system are, are key cogs to what we're trying to do to help support our students. But whether it's counselors working on SEL work with students in this unbelievably difficult time that we are now, I guess, eleven months in, if you go back to March thirteenth, whether it's the work around trying to help kids continue to advance to college and, and do all the work to try to get to college, whether it's the work of building schedules for, I mean, the, the, the work of just building a middle school schedule or a high school schedule and the impact on that from the perspective of kids staying remote or kids coming on site and just so many moving parts. Our counselors are at the, at the middle of all of this work. So I, I, I think the school board, long before many other school boards in the area, showed the importance of the counseling team by staffing counselors at all of our elementary schools, adding counselors, you know, to adding counselors at the middle school at the high school level. It's fortunate that we have the, the support there that we do. They do an unbelievable job every day. And I just want to share my appreciation for all of our counselors in the district. And with that, I see Rob getting ready to unmute his screen and read the proclamation.
We are. National School Counseling Week, School Counselors All In For All Students proclamation. Whereas, school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, the Board of Directors of Evergreen Public Schools do hereby proclaim February first through fifth, 2021, as National School Counseling Week.
Thank you, Rob. Any other comments by the board?
I just agree with everything that Mike said about, the work is so important and especially even more so challenging in this last year of trying to make sure that our students are engaged and staying on the right track. And when you talked about building the schedule, it's like, if, when you visit a high school on the first day of school, the counselors are the most popular people in the, in the entire building because they got all those kids that are trying to change their schedule. So the, you know, work is difficult right now, and we just appreciate everything that they're doing to help support our kids in get through this.
Rachel?
I don't think I have much different to add. I would just echo those sentiments.
Thank you. And I would like to give them a round of applause. That's what we would do normally in our board meetings, so. Thank you, everybody. Next up, we have even more good news and acknowledgement here. This is our department spotlight. And I think Mike is going to give us an idea of who are being recognized tonight.
Yeah, so, so, you know, we have so many, honestly, so many folks that work for the school district across schools, across departments that go way above and beyond and do just such amazing work. And, you know, we do these, these recognitions periodically. Lori and I have been talking about it for a while, and the, the belief is, you know, we just make this part of our, our every month's meeting because it gives you all on the board an opportunity to kind of hear some of the stories about what's happening in the district and, and see some faces that you might not typically see, and also recognize people that honestly just work their butts off. I mean, they just constantly do. So tonight, what, what we're recognizing for the first group, you know, we, we have done our best to bring students back in our school district. I honestly think from day one, we've, we've made every effort we possibly could. And I think next, I think it's next meeting that we'll recognize folks within the Special Ed Department that have worked hard to make that happen. But a couple of the areas that we've worked on, you know, and, and we'll bring in our elementary kindergarten teachers because they obviously were part of this from the beginning as well. But one of the things that we implemented over the summer was the idea of a, of a student engagement team in our buildings. And so we have some folks here with us. We have Tiffany Morrison from Riverview Elementary, a counselor. So not only is she recognized for the work with the student engagement teams, but also as a counselor in our school district. We have Oops Mullen, the Green Bay Packers fan. We'll look beyond that at this moment in time. He's Dean of Students at Frontier Middle School, and we have Brittany Goff, Dean of Students at Evergreen High School, who have all worked, those three folks have worked as members of the student engagement teams in those schools. And from the beginning, you know, the whole, the, the effort was, you know, that we have certain guidelines around how we bring students back to school. But it said from the beginning, kids that are at risk, that we can bring them in in small groups. And so one of the things that we did over the summer was the, the teaching and learning team kind of came up with some guidelines provided to some schools. We had some bumps along the way. No question what we learned. What we've already know, we've always known, and maybe sometimes we forget, but we relearned again was the transportation has so much to do with what happens in our school district. So while we were able to bring kids in, sometimes it was difficult with the transportation schedule that we'd built with our elementary schools to make sure that kids were getting in at the right times to be able to serve exactly the way we wanted to, but we, we kind of worked through that. So there were bumps along the way, but we've got to the point where we've been bringing in kids on a weekly or every couple of weeks, kids that we identify. I, I don't really want to talk a lot about the work that they've done. I'd really rather allow the board kind of to ask them some questions about the process and kind of, and then let them answer questions. I'm not going to put anybody on the spot and say, hey, I expect you to have five minutes each because I didn't do that. I'm not expecting that, but I knew that the board would have questions. I just really want to highlight, first of all, the, these three and the many, many other people, their classified staff working on, on these teams. Their administration working on these teams, their counselors working on these teams, their dean, their athletic coordinator, their teacher. We had all kinds of people working to identify and then making the contacts with kids to get them to school, which isn't always, wasn't always the easiest thing. So that's one group that we're recognizing tonight. And then the second group, Cindy Myers is here as one of our nursing instructors at Gila, kind of representing the wide variety of staff that kind of on their own volunteered to bring kids in kind of at the earliest time that they possibly could and still following the guidelines and in many different situations. I think we have both at Cascadia Technical Academy as well as Gila, we have a situation where we have kids that are really working hard to get certifications and there's hours that they need. And we had so much, so many staff members working with those kids to make that happen. We've had, now that we've got to the point, we have the new guidelines, we've got kids coming in from middle schools, high school, you know, we got drones being taught at Union, we've got any number of things going on. So also want to make sure that we highlight those, those folks as well. And it's not going to stop with these four. We'll continue to talk about this on a weekly basis. I just got a text, but I need to make sure that I also point out that Duke is a, a member, a graduate of Evergreen Public Schools. He is a product of our Evergreen School System, much like Mr. Perkins, who spoke earlier about his time in the Evergreen Public School. So with that, I just really want to express my appreciation to all of the folks starting at teaching and learning, transition to administration, transition to our staff in our buildings that worked as hard as they have for the last eleven month, well, I guess since this fall, but really honestly, they've worked since this started and even before that to try to serve our kids every way we possibly could and work to get those students that were struggling into school. So with that all opened up, if, if there's any questions that any of the board members have or if, and, and then if, if there's any statements any of the four of you want to share, that's awesome also. I think Rob's just waiting. Somebody's gonna ask. I know somebody's gonna ask.
I'll ask a question. So, because I know, we've had groups, students come in since the beginning, but really like, has it been the same kids, like week after week, how often do they come in? And what were the, some of the things that you identified about those kids needing that, maybe that extra outreach?
I can start if you want. No, we've, our school particularly has brought in about one hundred and thirty-two students throughout this whole time. So it hasn't been the same students over and over again, but it really has varied based off student to student need, right? I think one of the big things we tried to do was identify what the struggles were the students were having and then try to fix those, those as we could. And so for some students, they might have come in for two weeks. We fixed the, the things that we're making them, or having them struggle with. And others, it's been a constant, they've been in here, we've had a couple that's been in here since day one. So it's been, it's, it's been a process and we try to make it match the individual need of the student. And the part second question, we have, we've been identifying, it's changed, much like the process of bringing students in has, it's changed throughout. Start off with just teacher referrals. So then we started looking at, as, after the first proxy reports came out, we started looking at students who are failing classes, who are most struggling and work our way down. And then as the numbers have improved, times have we been able to bring more students in, we've really just started, we, we followed, I heard a principal say this, and I, we adopted, we followed the airline strategy of we overbook, we overbook, overbook, and then, and if we ever meet capacity, then we'll handle it. But we never, never got to that exact point, but we were able to just keep inviting people as, whether it be social, emotional, academics, or just structure at home that they needed, you know, help with. That was our parameters.
That's great. Thank you.
And I'm happy to share next.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I've worked with the set students as well, sort of from the beginning of when the students came. You know, we get notified of when our students were here and, and so I've been working with them and it's been an amazing, it's just amazing to see what happens when kids get to come back into the building, reconnect with the teacher and really have that one-on-one connection. And I could tell you a million stories that bring you to tears about students who, I have one particular student who, and she hadn't been to a single class, but I, she came in for the last two weeks before the end of the semester. And she turned in five out of six assignments over two days, and now she's coming to class, live sessions every single day. So it just turned her around, that ability to be able to come in here and a ton of stories just like hers. But I wanted to share too about, as soon as we could get the go-ahead to start bringing the students in nursing and patient care back in. So last year in March, when school closed, the students who had been in the pathway for almost two years were twenty-some hours, clinical hours shy of program completion. Everything shut down. The school, the state quit testing students. Those program, those students had to leave school without their program completion. It still makes me quite emotional. So this year, coming back, it was like, we just did not want that to happen again to the students who are now seniors in the program. So as soon as we got permission and we could start bringing students back in, I think it's been since October, but we've been bringing in five students at a time and safely. And they've been working on their skills because, you know, the state doesn't budge with the requirements and the students have to have twenty-two of them done and completed to be able to test for certification. So we've been working with seniors, different students, they come in and at different times, we've been sending packets home for them to practice on the buses if they can't come pick them up. Blood pressure cuffs, stethoscopes, we were able to get some equipment to send it home. And then the state, because, you know, healthcare workers are getting tired out there, realized they can't stop. They have to start testing for certification again. And so they just filed for some emergency draft rules to be able to allow schools that apply and have the proper equipment to, to be able to allow, um, schools that apply and have the proper equipment to, um, to be able to have simulation count towards clinical hours. So we applied the first of January. Hila is set up for it perfectly. We got approval on January 27th. So on February 1st, we now have 24 students in clinical simulation. Their clinical hours in here at school count just as they would if they were out in the community as long as COVID-19 is a crisis. And so we bring them in and they're small groups. Um, and so we're working some extra time to make that happen, but it's, it's so worth it. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that our students will complete the program this year. And it's been an innovative approach, but, um, it's working and the kids are so glad to be back at school. So thank you for inviting me to share.
Thank you, Cindy. That was interesting.
Um, I guess I could speak to the high school. Um, so we had about 150 kids coming in, different students every week. Um, and right around Thanksgiving, we changed to keep them consistently coming so that they were the same students every week. Um, because we were coming up to trimester and we're coming up to the last part of the semester to help them pass. Um, we had a really good reception with it. I created a form, um, for the teachers and for counselors to refer students to the program and they would express the need that they were seeing, whether it was a lack of engagement online, not turning things in, if a student had expressed this is going on at my home. Um, just so that the kid had this, this voice as well. Um, and so we took that and now we're in our second semester. Um, we have over the course of two days, they're coming in on Monday or Thursday, Tuesday or Friday, um, 150 confirmed students saying, yes, they're going to be in our building, which meets, uh, which is in compliance with all of the, the new numbers and things that came out. Um, and they get to work directly with their teachers because we've called in their teachers to work with them in small groups. So the kids that are struggling in math, because math is not my thing. Um, they get help, right? They get to work with this teacher and have this engagement and it's really positive. Um, we've set up the availability so they can take meals home with them. We feed them breakfast. We give them lunches for today and the next day, food for their family if they need it. Um, our F C R C has been on site to help with kids with bus passes or issues of, of things of, um, that they need help with. And then with the clinic being on our campus as well. If a student has expressed a need, um, but they have something that needs to be dealt with medically, we can get them connected so they can set up an appointment while they're on campus so they can come to school, they can have their health checkups and they can go home. So we're trying to be as inclusive with everything in the, in the process as we can.
That's great. Thanks, Brit.
I can speak to the elementary.
Okay, Tiffany.
School if you'd like. Um, we were one of those unfortunate late schools in which, uh, the transportation situation was, um, counterproductive to bringing in kids in, um, in person. So uh, in other words, they had to, because of the timing of the busing, they had to miss both their morning and afternoon live sessions if they were going to be brought into the building. And of course, that was the opposite of what we were trying to accomplish with them. So we had to get a little creative around providing services. So we, in elementary, uh, at River View, did a lot of like video conferencing, particularly focusing on our E, English language learners and, um, had help with meeting with parents and students together, um, to try and figure out what the barriers were to, uh, them being able to join in on classes. Um, we did seventy-ish home visits, bringing supplies, um, having porch discussions, um, exchanging Chromebooks. We sent home visuals, uh, with kids so that they could have a way of logging on and, you know, helping their parents understand how to access the technology. We did a lot of small groups. I have regular open lunches with fourth and fifth graders every week so they can socialize with each other. I did one-on-one, uh, check-ins with kids that were struggling. Um, talked with parents about, uh, some of the frustrations home that were happening around um, getting kids engaged. Um, and, uh, we tracked about sixty different kids and we sent home cards regularly that were handwritten by somebody that they knew in the building to sort of encourage them to stay connected to their community and to get re-engaged. Um, we sent home all the regular fidgets and stuff that we would normally provide at school for kids that have trouble, uh, you know, keep, need their hands to be busy while they're working on other things at home. Um, and our staff used Hopara a lot to, um, log in with the kids to see specifically where they were getting stuck, what they were getting stuck on, what assignments they needed help with. Um, things like that. And then, uh, after we came back from winter break, we had a school-wide incentive to re-engage all of the kids. Um, and our goal was perfect attendance at every live meeting, including specialists and small groups. And we had about twenty-five, thirty percent of the school were successful in being perfect. They got a little prize and then, uh, many more were, um, were pretty good, pretty good. And, um, they were really delighted and it, when we track participation and effort, which we of course did every week, um, we saw an effect on our school-wide initiatives too, and the reducing the number of kids that were on that list. But in answer to your question, Julie, it was pretty steadily, um, the same group of kids that we struggled to engage. Uh, and one of the biggest obstacles aside from, um, them being English language learners, we found a high percentage of our families in that category were having trouble. Um, being active in live sessions, but the other big group were kids that who had working parents and they didn't have anybody at home to help them to, um, or just hold them accountable even to get them logged on and working. Um, so that group and then, um, our biggest concern now are the missing kids where we, they're enrolled, but we haven't heard from them or their parents, um, in weeks and weeks. Uh, and that's more of a concern now just because we're back in person. Um, and some of the kids that are supposed to be in person are, we're still don't know where they are. So, um, that's systemically something I think we might need to figure out as a school system. Uh, because it's pretty concerning, but otherwise we just got creative.
Sounds like everybody was creative. Thank you for all your hard work. Rob, did you have any questions?
Well, I, I wondered, we've got, uh, deans of students and, um, I guess I could ask you to briefly, briefly, uh, compare the scope of work, uh, that you faced this year as opposed to eighteen, nineteen? If you were in the job then, and, uh, what do you anticipate as we get further and further into the in-person? In terms of, it's, it's in terms of something another school director from a different district said is that our schools are about to experience, uh, all the problems that our kids are having at home right now. As deans of students, I imagine your job, you encounter the trauma responses of students more often than other staff might. And I wonder if you could talk about that and, and what you anticipate needing as we forge on into the future.
Um, at the high school level, so I was in the dean position in twenty eighteen, nineteen. Um, so your first question, scope of work, um, it's about the same, it's just different work. Um, so there is no discipline, but everything's going to be restored. If I were working really, really hard to get kids to learn, um, how to handle appropriate things online and how to discuss, you know, frustrations and who to reach out to. Um, and so it's just a, it's a different kind of work. Um, one thing that I've worked with my security team, now that I have security with me, setting up mentor and positive relationships with kids and doing it before they get back. So we are working on building caseloads of kids that they can call and connect with and, um, brought in our at-risk advocates, our coaches, because the, the social emotional piece is going to be really vital, I think, that, um, I think I'm experiencing trauma, right? We've all experienced trauma and I'm an adult and I can process. These are, they're, they're children, um, maybe an adult-sized bodies, but they don't necessarily have some of those skills. And so we are really focusing on uh, the mentor component of reaching out beforehand and working with them, seeing what needs they need now, but what are they thinking they're going to need when they get in here? And when we do see these kids, whatever's happening, whatever, um, chaos, you know, behind the scenes as you work is we are so excited to see them when they come in, in the, in the building. We are happy, we are smiling because we want them here and I, we want them to want to be here and to know that we are here for them. But we are preparing for that next step. When they come back, how do we, how do we handle them and help them?
Yeah, really just echoing a lot of what, uh, Brittany just said, um, it's going to be all about relationships. I was not a dean of students last year. Um, so I don't have that scope to compare to, uh, but we anticipate as kids come back, it's going to be, you know, this first day of school for a lot, it's going to feel like that first day of school. They're going to have some of the same social awkwardness of having a new classmates and seeing new students who they haven't seen in person. I have a feeling they're going to see their, some of their teachers and be like, oh, you're real, you know, I've only seen on screen before. Uh, so it, for us, I think a big focus is going to be that, so, just like Ms. Goff said, that social, emotional piece, that restorative piece, and also just continue to keep building relationships, um, as it come in. I love that we're doing a gradual increase to starting with this, uh, for middle school, starting with those sixth graders who have never been in our building. Letting them get, uh, some time in here to see, uh, you know, what the layout looks like, where they go, hear the procedures before we start bringing seventh, eighth as well. Um, I think that's all going to be a, just to say, I mean, it's always essential, but even more so now that they've been out of school for, out of building for potentially eleven months.
Thank you. Um, Dee, is Tiffany, do you have anything to add about trauma responses in children as they get back into the school, especially with the safety protocols? W- we hear a lot of worry that the kids won't obey, that they won't keep their masks on or, or follow directions and um, I wonder if you could speak to that a little?
They're doing beautifully and we're so pleased. Um, you know, uh, we, we're a positive behavior intervention support school. We've been, uh, implementing that program and as you know, it's never fully implemented. You're constantly working it. Um, but clear expectations and warmth and compassion are, um, you know, where we start. And so, uh, we set them up for success by letting them know what's expected and they're, they're doing well. Lots of support, lots of reteaching. We've had very few kids, um, who were sort of insistent that they didn't need to wear a mask and we're, we're working with them. Um, but, uh, you know, we're back to full hybrid now in elementary. And, um, the kids are just a little, a lot of practice, you know, they're, um, they're at recess sort of staring at each other and, uh, and they'll, I think we just need to remember that they, this is going to take time. Um, you know, uh, all of us have not had to exercise the same types of social skills that we did when we were in groups of people. People forget, kids forget. But, um, you know, even this week, this is our second week of full implementation and they're, they're chatting, they're playing together, they're starting to remember what it's like to start a conversation and do some of those basic things. Um, but I think that, uh, you know, I just think patience and, um, routines and consistency and warmth are going to be key. I, I know that there's a lot of national conversation about how far behind kids are and how we've got to catch them up. Um, I just think that it's going to take a while for kids to come out of their shells and to process what they've been through. And then this change of coming back to school, but having school be not anything like what they were imagining when they thought they would be going back and just um, allowing them to have feelings about that and to talk about that. And, um, and just to be there to support them, reteach, um, provide that consistency and, um, and let them kind of just settle in. The learning will come. They're, they're already smarter than they were last week. I mean, they're just soaking it up and they're so delighted to be back. But it is hard. It's different. They can't hug each other, you know, they can't, they have to wash their hands more than they ever have in their whole lives. And, um, so I think it, patience would be, uh, would be my number one recommendation that the adults around them model patience and let them know, you know, that we understand it's just going to take time. And then as things come up, we'll deal with them. Um, so, yeah.
On that, on that subject, sorry, Rob, do you mind if I ask a question?
Not at all. Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, on that subject, you know, I have two daughters who are in elementary school and I have definitely seen progress in their abilities, um, and their knowledge this year. But I probably like all parents wonder, is it, am I seeing, you know, are they, are they on grade level? Will they be able to catch up to grade level? Are we going to have to adjust our curriculum for next year? Are we going to hold students back some? Are we going to just have more interventionists? You know, what do you think about, you know, those kind of questions that I think a lot of parents have right now?
Well, we did assessments during remote learning and kids are learning and they have learned. Um, they weren't just, uh, you know, bums on a log who were stagnant the entire fall. It was different kind of learning and, um, you know, it, it probably hits the brain a different way when you can't work in small groups in the way that you're used to. Um, I mean, catch up to what? They're all, I think this is going to be a, a generation that we're going to be treating, remembering this time for a decade until, you know, they, they graduate, but, um, they are tremendously capable and I think they will learn as rapidly as they can. I think that it would be reasonable to expect that all grade teachers are going to have to dip into the year before their current assignment and just, you know, you, you have to meet kids where they're at before you can bring them, you know, into new learning. So and that's always been the case with teachers. It might just be a little bit of a deeper dig into, you know, last year's curriculum in order to, um, to find those holes in their learning and fill them. Um, I mean, I had this fantasy that we would just as a system, uh, not advance anybody. And I can just imagine the uproar that we would have in high school at people having to be in the same grade that they were last year. So, you know, that sometimes things that sound great on paper are totally unrealistic and that's why I'm not the superintendent. So, because I don't have to make those hard decisions, but, um, I think that, you know, we can't get too caught up in, uh, they're not where they're supposed to be. Because that doesn't really help anybody. They just are where they are. Let's go there and we'll, um, teach them in the same way that we, that we always would with anyone in terms of learning. You just figure out where they are. You, you provide the holes, fill in the holes and you move them forward. Um, but I don't really know, Rachel, what that's totally going to look like as a system. I mean, I think that's a big question that is on everybody's minds. But if we can just let go of, you know, uh, where we should be and just kind of, you know, meet them where they are. Um, we have incredible teachers in this district who have so much experience and knowledge. Um, I, I just have such confidence that the kids will make progress and we know that. Um, but I don't know where the magical goalposts really are. Um, and of course I speak from elementary, there are definitely goalposts in high school, but, um, you know, we can't force anything. We just have to do the best we can to, to figure out what happens next, I guess.
I guess from the high school perspective, we've really worked on, on some of the soft skills of perseverance and resilience and punctuality. You are going to show up at this time and you are going to, um, some of those adult skills because, uh, you know, yes, we want them to be really successful academics. yes, we want them to be really successful academically. But right now, we get this opportunity to really focus on some of those other things of struggling and struggle isn't failure. Failure is okay. And how do we get back up and keep going? And in, in the in-person learning, I only get them for two hours a day, but we're gonna, we're gonna rock that two hours. It's gonna, it's gonna be great. And we're gonna persevere and we're gonna be flexible and we're gonna adapt. And, and so I don't necessarily know, like Tiffany said, where that magical goalpost is because we're just gonna keep supporting you and keep going and keep pushing. So when you leave us, because eventually you're going to leave us, you're gonna be a great member of this community with the ability to persevere and to continue and to keep going.
I think that was, that was actually the segue into my next question and gives me a chance to just kind of summarize, because the advice that I'm hearing from all of you is that we're in this moment together, right? And that, yeah, we, we seen the, I guess, the MTSS triangle, the red, yellow, green, that comes in our SIP reports and that, that red zone is much larger this year. Would you, and, and that can be a cause for worry. I don't hear you saying, don't worry or don't care. I hear you saying, accept. Is that a, is that a good way to put it? Let's accept that we are where we are together. Seeing, I'm seeing your pictures. Pictures are on my screen and you're nodding your heads and I appreciate it.
Yeah. I, I speak to that a little, Rob. You know, I, I think some bringing students in and talking, hearing their stories, it's, it's pretty obvious. It's not that they can't do it, right? They're, they're very, very capable individuals, you know, to do it. A lot of times the students bring in, it's kind of same narrative. There's just, there's other, there's other barriers at, at home that, that weigh in on that, right? So when we're able to bring them in and work with them in here, even, even for that two hours a day, it just really helps eliminate some of those barriers. Whether, whether it's they're distracted from their other siblings who are also doing remote learning or, you know, a single family parent where mom, dad's working all day long, so they don't have that necessarily, that accountability piece. And for me, if we're talking about middle schools here, I know if I was in middle school and this was happening, good luck to me. But, but it's just those kind of barriers. It's not that they're not capable of doing it. It's just this, this was a structures that might be lacking in some cases.
But I know at the state level, they're doing things like annotating the high school transcript a little bit differently for the COVID pandemic period. And there's been some flexibility in crediting and wavering that still brings you to graduation. The argument is sort of the recognition that there have been ten years of good schooling and you shouldn't, I guess you shouldn't penalize high schoolers and, and others with a lack of progress that nobody could make, right? And that there's, there is this confidence, right? There's this confidence that when they graduate, even though some stuff got lost, they're still going to be whole people. And I, I loved, I love the nodding and the smiles. I appreciate having that reflected back. Thank you for coming in to the meeting and talking with us about this.
Thanks for having us. It was, I mean, it's nice to share some of the things that are happening and, you know, that the, the kids that are coming in are being really successful when they're in and they're smiling and they're happy. And in terms of a dean, I haven't had any discipline issues. I'm I'm enjoying being with them. That's been really exciting, right? For so long, I've just spent on a computer and now I get to walk down the hall next.
That's nice.
Thank you for having me.
Congratulations on your success that you're having.
Yeah, I just wanna say again, thanks to all of you and then all of the others in our buildings that are doing the same work. But I think you did it, all four of you do a tremendous job of reflecting what happens in our school. So thank you for everything you do.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I think we're gonna move the agenda along and next up is our board consent agenda. Do I have a motion to to approve the board consent agenda?
Director Perkins, so moves.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. I'm a yes. Rob?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And Rachel?
Yes.
There you are. I lost everybody. Okay, um, oops. Minute we put the agenda back up, I lost everyone. Okay, so the, the consent agenda, board consent agenda is approved. Here. Next up, we have the superintendent consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's consent agenda?
This is Julie. I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
You have two seconds.
Two seconds.
Okay, let's take a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, great. That's been approved. All right. Um, next up, we have board, oh wait, this superintendent, we don't wanna do that.
That's okay. You can skip over the superintendent report.
No, let's hear, let's hear from Mr. Merlino.
I'm gonna share just a few things. First of all, the county updated their rate. You likely saw that today. And the number for the county is two sixty-two point two per hundred thousand. And the trend continues to go down. I think the number of cases today that were reported were somewhere around twenty-six. And over the weekend, you had sixty-two a day. I, we continue to see the, the cases trend down. That's a positive. You heard comments earlier around elementary school now, we're, we're in the midst of week two of all of our kids being back in, that have chosen to come back in. And I think that's probably about seventy-five percent of our elementary kids. I appreciate all the work that went into determining the remote staff versus the onsite staff. There's a lot of work with HR, with our buildings. There isn't any question about that. This has not been a time where people haven't had to work hard to make things happen. I was fortunate enough to go out to Endeavor and Emerald last week and kind of be able to walk through the buildings with Lauren and Darcy. And, you know, and, and what you see is, you know, there, there may be a few less kids in the classrooms. They're kind of sitting apart from each other. They've got their masks on. But there's all kinds of work going on. And I, you know, I, I asked a lot about the, not only the kid. I mean, kids are very excited to be back, but also the staff, the question on staff, because I, I think that there, without question, there's just been anxiety around all of this, whether you, you know, were concerned about coming back or whether you weren't concerned about coming back. But what I heard from both Lauren and Darcy was, you know, there is some anxiety with some of the staff and then they get back and then they start to kind of reconnect with the kids and it kind of helps significantly because that's why they're all here. You know, they wanna work with kids. They wanna be with kids in person. And so that's been helpful. As I've said many times, I'm very appreciative of all the work that went into ensuring that the protocols are being followed and they've been put in place. It's really great. So it was great to get back to a school and see kids in middle school. Now we're in our second week of below three fifty, we're in the moderate range. We've talked about the middle school staff being trained this week and then bringing back our sixth graders next Thursday. And do refer to that a little bit. We'll have sixth graders in starting the eighteenth and the nineteenth, they'll come back the first two days and then everybody comes back, sixth, seventh and eighth grade on Thursday and Friday. It's been twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. So really excited for middle school to start up. High school, you know, they, there are folks coming in, as you heard earlier in high school, we need to get below two hundred in order for us to move. Our high school staff is gonna get trained on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And if the trends continue as they are and we, and we get below two hundred, which if we have, if, if you're in the range of sixty-two, you know, and, you know, basically we're in the fifties over the last four days in terms of average. I think there's a really strong chance that the twenty-third, we will be below two hundred, which would allow us then the following week to start bringing in our high school students. So that's right now, kind of what we're looking at is the, the very strong possibility of our high school students, starting with ninth graders for the first couple days and then bringing kids back across nine twelve towards the end of that first week. Very possible that that happens the first beginning of March. And that's very exciting. At the end of the week, I, I guess I would say a couple of things. One, Bill Omen texted a picture of kind of what a, a, a new band class kind of looks like. And it, it was a very socially distanced. Their new music guidelines that came out here just in the last week or two from the state. We're bringing in some small groups and in a very socially distanced manner able to offer music in, in some of our, of our secondary schools. Corinne shared the picture with Bill, who shared it with myself and others. Corinne just talked about how happy the, the kids and the staff were to have the opportunity to start bringing the music back in person and not be zooming across the internet. That's a huge thing. At the end of this week, I believe the, the metrics for the Southwest region will be updated for athletics. And I think there's a really strong chance that we hit three of the four metrics, which would then allow for athletics to move to the next step. When we went through budget cuts back in the oh-nine, ten, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve, we kind of restricted at that time the way we did transportation for athletics. And in order to, to make certain that we were kind of following the guidelines, every time someone puts in a, a request for a trip for athletics into the system, to the transportation department, I would get an email. And then when it's approved, I get another email. And honestly, over the last eight, nine years, I've just been annoyed by those emails because you get so many of them and you're just deleting these emails. Well, I got, I'm, I'm starting to get those emails again and getting the approval. And so the first events are actually taking place. The, the, the golf matches that are starting to take place, the tennis matches that are starting to take place, the cross-country meets that are starting to take place. I welcome those emails. I'll never again look at those emails with any annoyance whatsoever because it represents that our kids are having opportunities that they haven't had for now eleven months. And that's huge. So I'm, I'm very happy to share that with you as well. Vaccinations update real quick. We had a meeting Monday again. I have mentioned that Clark County has brought in kind of the FEMA logistics experts to kind of work with us. I think we have a real good plan in place in the county. OSPI is working directly with Kaiser to try to put some plan in place for districts in the state. I think if folks can get vaccinated through the Kaiser partnership with OSPI, we want that to happen. We think that's fantastic. But at the same time, we're planning within the county, logistically, to be prepared whenever we get to the point where the state says, okay, there have been enough vaccinations in the group of over sixty-five and now we can move to schools. And that the supply is readily available because the supply is a significant factor in this. But whenever we get the word that we're ready to go, we really believe that school employees can be, and there's about thirteen thousand in the county, that within a week, using, you know, we've, we've got a, a Google sheet that outlines all the nurses in the various districts that have volunteered to participate in the vaccinations. We've got the, the logistics people. We've got the people that help with the paperwork. We've got sheets of people that have stepped up and put their names forward across districts in Clark County so that we're ready for this whenever this occurs. And in our district, the likelihood is Heritage would be a site and McKenzie Stadium would be like the drive-through site for likely the county. We've got sites in Vancouver School District, Battleground School District, Camas School District. We just need to go ahead. I've said many times and we can go back and look at the video that we need to be prepared whenever the vaccination, and in my mind, that was really the state needs to be prepared or the departments of health need to be prepared, the legislature, the governor need to be prepared. I don't know that we've been all that successful with that preparation. Part of that's the supply. Part of it is just kind of the disjointed nature of the way that's worked. But whenever we get the word in our county that the supply is available and we can move forward in our schools, we really do believe we can get those folks vaccinated in about a week's time. Just very, very regimented and very dialed in. And so we just want that to come sooner rather than later. Very hopeful for that. I would say that we're working right now on the budget calendar. We'll have a little bit of a legislative update in the workshop where we can talk about some of the legislative things that are going on. I wanna say it's about six thirty-seven. We have people that work in the Camas School District and the Battleground School District that are waiting for eight o'clock or eight fifteen. We're very hopeful that there's success in those districts, especially in this time where there's just this idea that if, if we, if we vote no on something, that somehow that will force kids back to school. There isn't a connection between funding in the local levies and any districts. There aren't any districts that I'm aware of in Clark County that aren't doing everything they can. If all of the guidelines appropriately and try to get students back in school, we're no different than any others. We, we just aren't on the cycle of running a levy, but Battleground and Camas are gonna hear the results of their levy tonight. So very hopeful for them. They have great people in those districts and, and the, the kids deserve all the support that they can possibly receive. And then the last thing I just wanna mention, mention is we kind of got an unexpected retirement from Judy DeRocher. And I don't really wanna talk about necessarily her retirement, other than I just wanna honor all of the years that she put into our school district as a teacher, as an instructional coach, as an associate principal, as a principal, as a leader. She's been a tremendous, tremendous employee for Evergreen School District. And it's unfortunate that, that she's retiring. And I just wanted to make sure that that just kind of didn't happen without any kind of recognition or acknowledgement of that. I'm sure that there will be more in the future, but I just wanna say how much I appreciate Judy and everything she did for Evergreen School District. I worked with her for twenty years, not, not as closely, obviously, as folks that taught with her or that, that worked for her or with her in the various roles she had. But she's just a great lady and has done an amazing job for our school. I wanted to publicly acknowledge that. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next up, we have board comments. This is a time for board members to talk about anything of interest that they'd like us to all know about. Do I have any board comments? Julie, you got anything for us tonight?
Just, I guess, just real brief. I appreciate, Mike, you bringing in the, the, the teams from the student engagement teams. That was really interesting to hear what they had to say. I know that we've heard a lot about them from the beginning of the year, but it was nice to be able to interact with them and really hear about the work that they're doing. Cause I know that the board really appreciates the efforts that have been made to make sure that we're making those connections with kids. And then last, I don't know if it was last week or, yeah, it was last week. I, I had, when I was two weeks ago, my, my weeks are all running together. But I had Wasda Board meeting. I guess it was kind of the first official one of the year. So that was interesting. And I know that they're working closely. One of the directions of the Wasda Board is to have really work with the reopening plans for next year to make sure that every, that we're working now to see what that looks like at the beginning of next school year for the entire state. So working with the governor to make sure what those look like.
Thanks, Julie. Anything from you, Rachel?
No, I don't have any further comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. Rob?
I, over the last two weeks have been, I'm just looking at the calendar off here on the other screen, is legislative committee work and following bills and but I think what it's given me over the last two weeks is a lot of confidence in Mike and Melissa Gomboski as legislative advocacy team. They're working very closely with Wasda and the other interest groups to make sure that the emergency bills are making their way through the legislature and, and making sure that the policy bills align with the interests of our kids and families. And beyond that, I, any details I'd And beyond that, I, any details I'd prefer to share during the workshop. I have, let's see. Tomorrow is the Online Learning Advisory Committee meeting and the first Community Action Advisory Board meetings that I'll be in attendance on, so. And I think that takes us all the way to the upcoming strategic plan workshop or is that pushed off to?
That's pushed into March.
That's pushed into March. It's not pushed off. It's just rescheduled.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, it's been legislative. It's sort of expressing our stories and pictures and I also did some email back and forths with Brian Grimstead about setting up a process so that students can express interest in getting introductions to legislative committees and legislators. I have a meeting on the 17th arranged with Representative Paul Harris and I'm very interested in bringing some students along with that and hoping that rather than him hearing my voice, he hears theirs. So I want to thank Brian publicly for helping to set that up and hope for the best. I'd love to hear from students who, who want that opportunity and I can help them through, they can basically come as they are. Because that's what Paul's like, you know, Paul. And have a good conversation with him about what the circumstances are and and how the students feel about it. And that'll be, yeah, that's what I have to say. Except to add gratitude to Clarissa one more time for really good treatment of Black history and, and Black culture this, this month. Thank you again.
Thanks, Rob. I think the only thing that I have is that I need to connect with each of you regarding our our, our planning and for the equity work, our piece of it. And to get some input on that, I'd like to talk with each of you within the next couple of days. So let me know the best time of day, like Rachel, you're the most moving target of the bunch. So if you can connect with me, that would be good. And then I'll, I'll I'll catch up with the others. Okay, um, so if there isn't any other comments by the board, I'll move on. Okay. Next up, future agenda items. I, I don't know, does anybody have anything they want to add to our ever-growing list of items? Like Rob said, we've got the strategic planning process that will be, will be involved in and our equity work. Rob, did you have something?
We, we read out a land acknowledgement or a land stewardship acknowledgement template a couple of meetings ago and I
Oh, yes.
If we could, if we could have that scheduled for a regular reading out at each board meeting, perhaps in connection with after the Pledge of Allegiance. Might be a time to put that in.
Yeah. Could you connect with Lori as to what that looks like so that
Yeah, I'll see her tomorrow and
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Set that up. Sure.
Okay. All right. Um, next up, we have citizen comments. This is the time for the public to share with the board, things that were not on the agenda and are not personnel in nature. Just a reminder that because these are not items that were put out as agenda items, the board is not allowed to engage in discussion because people need to be aware of what the board's discussing, but we can ask clarifying questions if we need and that we do expect professional decorum here and, and we'd like you to keep your comments to three minutes. And I think I've covered all the, the bases here. So we have two people tonight on the left, on the list. We have Jennifer Kubenek first. Is she here with us tonight?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Hi, Jennifer. Thanks for joining us.
Hi. I just wanted to, okay, so anyways, y'all know who I am by now, you know? And I'm sure you, well, I hope you know that when I was expressing all of my anger and frustration, I was not the only one. I was just the most vocal. I am gifted with the ability to do public speaking and I am determined. Some people are, are not as good at that. So, you know, I was not just one voice. I was a lot of voices. I just want to clarify that for you. And also I think you chose back to go, chose to go back to hybrid learning too soon. I, I think it was, I, I think the numbers were way too high for you to be starting that so soon. I'm not saying never, but the teachers were concerned. There, there were legitimate concerns. I could hear in their voices when they were doing their comments. And I, I, I felt like, like it fell on deaf ears. Just, just my personal observations, I guess. I had my meeting with Mr. Monroe, by the way, and he took, he took my critiques actually as me having passion for children's safety. And in, in the interest of fairness, he actually understood why I was upset and angry. So which was nice to hear. And now he'll think to himself, what if they missed the bus? Because, you know, y'all thought I was crazy for thinking that that was an issue. I, I, I'm baffled because I mean, kids miss the bus, dude, like. And when I said last month that you must not know much about children, I meant all children, not just your kids, not just my kids. The kids that are in foster care, the ones with an absent parents, the one who had a parent die, the one who lives with their grandparents because their parents aren't, aren't up to raising them, kids that are neurodivergent. I, I was talking about all kids, not just your kids. So, you know, you telling me that my point was moot. It, 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 it just showed that you didn't understand what I was saying. And it, it made me feel that, and it implied that you don't care, actually. And it, I felt that you were basically telling me to shut up as a parent in your district. I feel like there was an opportunity for the board and Mr. Monroe, and I feel like he took the opportunity. And I hope you learn from this. There's a growth mindset. We ask our children to have it, right? We ask all the children in our district to have a growth mindset. It's taught at Fisher's Landing. I know, because I remember seeing it and hearing about it and I was very impressed. You guys had an opportunity for growth mindset. And I feel like you missed it. You could have taken all of our critiques and, and learned from it and grow from it. And, and instead of that, you rallied behind Mr. Monroe because you thought we were being a, being much of mean bullies. No, we were holding his feet to the fire because we felt that we were treated unfairly. And all of these guiding principles, now you're saying that they're just suggestions. But why were us parents, why were we held to them as rules? And your employees, they're just suggestions. It's not fair and you know it.
Well, we appreciate you giving us input, Jennifer. Thank you for being here tonight. And I have your husband Dean as the next person. Is he still wanting?
I'm right here.
He's just going to use mine.
You, you don't have to switch. You can just use this.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thanks, Dean.
All right. First, first off, I wanted to thank the board and the committee to listen to all the objections that we've presented over the last couple of months. I know it's not an easy thing for anybody to take on. And I want to apologize if I came off a little too aggressive in the last call. But I'm a very passionate guy, just like my wife is. I was able to listen to most of the conversation between my wife and Scott Monroe. And a lot of the, a lot of the data that he presented to my wife would have been helpful if that had been publicly released in some of these meetings because we were all at, at, looking at a blank, a blank map and just trying to guess how to fix things a little better. But from the output of your decision, and I, I will comment that in November, it sounded like you wanted to hear what we had to say, but by the time the December meeting rolled around, you'd already made your decision. And it felt like the December and January meetings were just to let us blow off steam and you had already made your call. So it, it, it felt kind of not, not right. But what I wanted to say was while you met some of your targets based on the right sizing the classrooms and eliminating some, not all of the outside classrooms. It looks like that our neighborhood, Clear Meadows, basically got the short end of the stick on every one of those guiding principles. You split our neighborhood, there's no safe walking route, et cetera, et cetera. All the same stuff we've talked about time and time again. So it felt like we were the sacrificial lamb to make your rest of your district look great, which I think actually sucks. One of the comments at the last meeting was that you had, what, 20 years with very little complaints about the reallocating of the districts. And I wanted to point, make a point on that. If there was this much blowback on this decision this year, obviously there was something that happened that didn't jive with what you've done for the last 20 years. There was obviously something that you should have said, huh, there's a lot of people that are really not happy with this decision. We should look into this. But you really didn't. You just let us vent and you made your decision anyway. And I can tell you the main reason why you got so much blowback from our neighborhood specifically. And you, you don't like to have this topic about all schools in the district are saying this, not the other thing. But people in this neighborhood and specifically in the Fisher's Landing neighborhood, not just our neighborhood, move into this area so they can go to the top rated school in the district. That is a problem because if you're, the rest of your district, if, if you're moving kids from one school to another and they're basically rated the same, it's not as credit, not, not as critical. When you're moving from a higher rated school to a lower rated school and you've paid extra money for your house just so you could go to that school. It's, it's just really not fair. And I brought that up to Scott on the first phone call we had him. I said, you're going to piss off somebody in, in the Fisher's Landing District because you're going to be moving kids out of that school district and the parents have paid money to get into that school. They've bought houses to get into that school. And when it was finally, when you finally admitted on the last call that the two parents that were in the Evergreen area, Evergreen Highway area that were originally slated to go to the original school and they ended up staying at Fisher's Landing and they live in the richest neighborhood in the district that is very poor optics, even though that outcome wasn't probably what we thought it was. The optics are terrible when that happens. In regards to the, in regards to going back to school early, I, I, I don't understand the need to do this the way you did. Two weeks earlier, when everybody's coming out of the holidays and the high COVID rates and everything. They're going down now, but they're still way high, still way high. And now from what I understand, you're not taking them full time. You're only doing two hours per day. These kids, we're finally just getting used to doing the online learning and now you've thrown them all in the big tumble again. They're, 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 the parents don't know which way is up. The kids don't know which way is up. Most of the kids have switched teachers mid-year yet again. You're, you're throwing a lot of curves at these kids. And you mentioned earlier in this call that that they're struggling. I wonder why they're struggling. You're throwing all these changes at them on the fly. It's just, it boggles my mind. And I'm done.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, well, that's, those are the only two folks that wanted to speak to us tonight. So we'll move on to our next, oh, we go into recess and we're going to take just a couple minute break and then we will come back into a board workshop where we'll have a teaching and learning equity update. A leadership assessment discussion, legislative updates. After that, we'll go into an executive session regarding real estate. And then we'll come out of that in adjourned. So I call this meeting into recess and let's get back here. Does, is a couple of minutes okay for everybody? Okay, sounds good. All right. Thank you. All right, our Julie's back and we can get rolling here. Okay, so first up, teaching and learning equity update. Would like to lead off on that.
We'll turn it off, turn it over to Julie and or Clarissa, whoever between the two of them wants to lead that off.
Yeah, I will start. I just first want to say a big thank you to all the principals. So all, all the work that went into starting back in person was a tremendous lift at the building level. Not only like the safety practices that they had to implement and working to get professional development to the teachers. At every level, they had to rework master schedules to make accommodations, to also help the be able to provide services to both in-person and remote students. And so I'm amazed at what they've done and have been able to do and have a successful elementary start. And now it's middle school and high school beginning. I just have a tremendous appreciation for that work that they had to do. That was a big middle of the year change. The other thing is, this is just a little thing, but the calendars have had to change some. So if you hear this in the community, we had to move our elementary and middle school and conferences to March. And then also anytime because of the busing changes and how we have an hour, we've shortened the school day by an hour. Early release days got a little tricky. And so there were three early release days for elementary that we had to move middle school and high school to early release two to accommodate busing because school is out at the same time. And so we, it was a trade-off of what to do and the kids will get their in-person schedule. It's just going to be, you know, a little bit shorter on three days for the rest of the year. And, and we're making those updates to the calendar, but just some, you know, byproducts of schedule changes and what's going on right now, but just a little update. That's all I've got.
Clarissa?
I also just had a couple of quick updates, one being that our spoken word contest is underway and currently we have 12 entries already from students across the district. I mean, from high school all the way down to elementary. It's those thinking cute to watch the videos when they come in. So those are coming in. Super excited about that. As well as, I know I heard Rachel mention that, you know, because of the pandemic and kind of what's going on in schools, teachers may or may not be able to celebrate Black History Month like they would have in the past. And so I am working with several buildings to create a virtual Black History Assembly that will be available for teachers to be able to present to students. And it will feature the poems or spoken word pieces from our students who have something to share about Black and African-American community members. So that's going to be like more of the, the, the present or yeah, the presence. And then woven throughout the assembly will be connections from what's happening in the present to what has happened in the past. As well as some hope for our future. Some musical arrangements will be in there. It's going to be great. And so just wanted to let Yvonne know that we will have something for students participating on the surprise Black History Month at a district level.
That's it? Great. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I would really quickly just also add that you, I'm sure all seen that the weather reports for the week aren't, are, are more problematic as we get to Thursday, Friday. So I think that there is a very reasonable chance that we could have the first non-snow day, remote day in the district's history with respect to the weather as opposed to with respect to the pandemic. So I'll update you on that. I'm going to meet tomorrow morning with Yvonne who, again, you know, we have the contract with the, I can't remember the name of the company, but Phil Volker, the former coin guy. So we'll give an update on what they're kind of expecting. I know we're hearing all kinds of different could be this, could be that, could be this. But I'll let you know what's happening and that would be kind of a Uh, but I'll let you know what's happening and that would be kind of a historic thing uh for our school district to be able to have a snow day but not miss school.
Oh, gosh, poor kids. They they need to have a little snow playtime, though.
They'll still, they'll they'll still find some time to get out in the snow, would be my suspicion. And I need to run by, I need to run by some store tomorrow and try to pick up a sled for myself because the girls are gonna be over here for part of that. So I would imagine we'll be finding a hill ourselves to try to roll down or do something with.
There you go. I had a question for you, Clarissa. Um, having to do, we received these, kind of the start of a schedule of um activities for, like, we had HR and they're talking about their activities on their equity plan. Um, we're pulling, we'll get our stuff pulled together and you and I are talking soon, so we'll be able to have that conversation. Um, where are we with teaching and learning in that? In that process?
On the, are you talking about the response to the equity audit actions? Yeah. Um, see, so teaching and learning had um begun some of those things kind of prior to uh the 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 equity audit confirmed lots of things that we need to do, but it didn't necessarily initiate all of the work. Some of the work had begun, so some of the things like working on what uh professional development will continue to look like and looking into the process for uh our Excel program, like how to, how students get into that. Some of that work has um already begun. But what you will have um soon is some links within that document that kind of show you the work that has happened thus far and what it will look like moving forward. Um, we just want to make sure that those beginning planning meetings have happened across the board for all of those areas before we put it out because we want that to be a community facing document so everybody knows how the work is moving along.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, there's Rob.
You're looking for me. I actually don't have any questions.
Okay, well, then let's move on to our leadership assessment discussion. Um, we had asked at the last um board meeting to, you know, have an, have that um process that we all go through. We've had so many changes with people, new people on the leadership teams. We, we just feel really strongly that as we go into our equity works, we go into our strategic planning that we all have a good understanding of who we're all, who we all are and what we're about and how we process things. And I think most of us have done this kind of work before, but I think it's important to revisit it with the group as we are now. So um thoughts?
Victoria, I have a couple of thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you know, I know that Jenny brought up doing like a personality. You know, maybe that's like a start and I, I think back to, you know, we have a a program at um at my work um that we put every employee through and part of it in the beginning, I mean, it's kind of a sales training ultimately, but it's about, it's really about building relationships. And the first part of it is um, you know, how to, you figure out your personality type and then you you know, then you kind of assess everybody else's and then how do you talk to each other? So part of it's like that, but then there's also a lot more to it. But I think that a start would be um maybe the, you know, uh personality type or, but then I also think that we need to do that might just be the surface, like we need to do much deeper, whether it be um a book study and have somebody come in and um, you know, work with us as a team. I I think it's much more than just doing one thing.
Yep. Did anybody have any ideas of a particular um assessment? That would be good to work with with this kind of work as far, I know, Rob, you've been through some of it through Identity Clark County.
It was uh Leadership Clark County, which is easy to
That's right.
And both were started by the Chamber of Commerce originally. Is that we went through the uh, through the broad strokes of the um, I wanna say Kuz and Posner, but that's is that right? Uh, it was a leadership uh framework kind of uh kind of book. And I still have the notes if we wanted to compare, but Jenny also knows uh and has been through that kind of testing. I also went through the uh another kind years ago with the previous employer, uh which was, it's sort of if you know the Myers-Briggs ones, it's the other one that a lot of corporations were using in the nineties. Uh, and I think the important thing about that is that you do more than take the assessment and look at the results together is that you actually you get into kind of community circle discussions about how this kind of personality type reacts to uh certain stressors in the, in the Berkman model, they call it stressors and uh it, now I'm blanking on the term, I apologize for that, but it it was about how people respond to stress and where they go in in their behavior when they're under stress as opposed to not under stress. Uh, and how that works out when you build it into a network of people who don't perceive the stressors in the same way or don't respond to them in the same way and and how that can either calm a situation down or just bring it into sharp relief and and make it an even bigger problem than if you had recognized that these personality differences were a a component of how things are built. It teaches, it taught us to respond to each other and what LCC did was they built the teams of the service projects uh so that there were different personality types in there. And that's how we did our learning is through the service project, but also through working with different kinds of people. And the growth came with that.
Did it, uh Leadership Clark County, did someone lead that, like that whole process?
Their executive director that year um did a lot of the legwork around that, but there was a consultant who was retained by LCC for their program and uh two or three opportunities to meet with the consultant as a large group, you know, to learn about the model, but then as the individual service project groups, the individual teams uh to go over the personality results. And uh, like Jenny pointed out, there's more than one way to do this kind of process uh and achieve the insights out of it than just Berkman. And they are always looking for an improvement to their process, so I think it's where Jenny was coming from with the alternative that she was holding up. And I can't remember the name of it, but she had the book in her hand and 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 so, yeah, I I, the important thing to me is that we don't just take the test and see the results and everyone else's results, but that we also do some do some serious discourse around what that means and help one another to realize when that causes frictions and when it resolves them.
We also participated with LSW at the beginning of the Bond project. Uh, they, I I don't, I don't know. I can't remember what it was, the system they used, but they had their own, some of their own staff members that have been trained to work with uh teams on some of the similar, so I mean, I think there are probably a lot of different types of things and there certainly are books as well um 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 that that can be potentially helpful as
Mike, can you find out who LSW worked with?
Yeah, I'm sure I've got it. I I I know I've got the res, yeah, definitely. I mean, I think, I don't remember the name of the company, but they had their own, some of their own staff that was trained on um leading folks through some of that work also. So definitely, and I think Sue might have even mentioned it. I don't know if Sue talked about it when we talked a couple of weeks ago, but but she was part of that as well, so.
Oh, sorry, Rob.
Uh, I think that they initially used a consultant, but then they ended up you, you know, training their own, they had their own staff members that would lead people through that. So it's kind of like train the trainer, like we've got now we're training our own staff to do some of the the all the wide variety of professional level that we do rather than constantly bringing people in. I think that that's what they had done um there. But I can find out who it was.
Do you think there's anybody within our district that's been through that it's like a trainer for this kind of thing? Is there, I'm just wondering with
You know, if
Like Carl or?
That's who I'm thinking of too, is Carl. Because if he doesn't know what, or he if he doesn't do it himself, or if he doesn't know how to do it himself, I'm pretty certain he knows which direction to point us.
I was gonna say, maybe we should get Carl's um input.
I I have, I, I mean, you guys probably know, I'm thinking about the teaching and learning people have a better idea of Carl's expertise, but I mean, so the question is, is you know, you got a Columbia Credit Union thing, you got a Leadership Clark County thing, there's an LSW thing, there might how do you want to try to determine what it is that that is used as um?
I think what we should, we should do is maybe compile, a couple of us compile a list of potential resources and review it and then come back with a recommendation so that we can just move forward.
Sounds good.
Clarissa, do you have, do you have any ideas about a direction we could be going?
Um, I I wasn't sure. I I thought I heard Jenny mention um Gallup, which was something that I have been uh familiar with in the past. And that centers more around um kind of leadership assets. And there is a, you know, there's a book and a test or assessment, if you will, that everyone takes. And the basis for that, though, is more about assessing what skills you bring, what are your fortes are. And then making sure that you have a team that's rounded out, that you don't have duplicates, right, of the same kind of skill set. Because normally what happens is they might butt butt heads and bits. Um, but that's just, that's my experience with Gallup. I don't have uh a specific framework or structure to put into place, but um as Mike was saying, I could potentially reach out to um some members within the district to see what their input may be.
That the Clifton strengths or strengths finder material, okay.
Jay, any thoughts? Got unmute, hon.
Yeah, no, um, I, there's a, there's a variety of groups out there that I know that would come in and facilitate like team building, uh culture building, uh focus. Uh, because a lot of times uh engaging in the assessment is one thing, it's just what the group does with it after that, that's important. That that help is needed with frequently. I would caution um around using uh somebody uh within the system uh as a person who might be facilitating some, you know, critical or sensitive or difficult conversation amongst the leadership group. It it just, it puts people in an interesting position.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good piece of advice right there.
But but I could, I apologize, I could, you know, I'm like, like everybody else, I could put together some thoughts related to that um that as potential options.
Okay. Um, thoughts, Julie?
I'm, I'm
You, Julie, but yes. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Julie B.
Me? Oh, I just, I just wanna say that I think that I would prefer um that we work with a consultant and somebody to lead us through the work to make sure that we're um that we stay focused and that it it's intentional and it's not just about getting results, but we gotta work hard at it um to try to get better.
And then the other, Julie.
I I agree with everyone saying like I like the outside consultant and we have a a weekly teaching and learning meeting that we can discuss also to kind of come up with some plans and problem solve around this, so we can continue that talk there too, to decide how this moves forward.
Okay, so um is Brian here? Oh. Were you awake or sleeping?
I'm awake, I'm awake, wide awake. I think the idea of us talking about it and teaching and learning, come back you with some options for you guys to think about could work pretty well. We could probably do that fairly quickly, as quickly as you wanted to go. And also, we could find out from the different organizations what they see their purpose as too, and that might connect with what you guys are thinking. Because it sounds like you have a couple different things in mind, so get a good, it could maybe help clarify a little bit exactly the purpose of it, the why we're doing it.
Yeah. Yeah, because we've got some big initiatives that we're working on and it's all strategic planning of one kind or another. And so I think it's just really important that the whole team, the bigger picture team can really have, be cohesive as we all come together. Is Janay on the hook here?
Yep.
Yep, I'm here.
Hey, Janay.
Hi.
So um let's make sure that we're hearing from everybody. Um, if anybody has any ideas, go ahead and and make sure that you forward, I can go ahead and be the collector of things when you guys have kind of come up with something. Um, I'd like us to be able to um make that final selection by our, at our next board meeting so that we don't just sit on this and you know, everything runs away from us because with strategic planning coming up, I just really want us to be on the right foot for this. Um, so yeah, so anybody's, I'm happy to hear from anybody about it. Um, Rob, can, can I work with you on this as far as um reviewing what the different ideas are and stuff and then or you and Julie or, you know, a couple people from the board so that we're
Yes.
Uh, in, in the loop on everything and can make sure that whichever one we pick fits what we want to do.
Yeah, let's, let's have a conversation.
Yeah. The other thing I want to talk about is that pertains to this has to do with who should be involved. Julie, do you have any ideas about who you think the board would like to see involved on that? Any thoughts on your end?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Oh, um, well, definitely this group. I think, and then I think we're missing Sue because it's her birthday today, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully she's having a good night. Um, so definitely this group, but I, I don't know, are you thinking like um senior director level two or?
Yeah, I think
If we get it to be too big, I don't know um how easy that would be to manage right now, especially if we're having to do it virtual to start.
So I think that definitely cabinet and extended cabinet. Who's on, I always get confused, who's on extended cabinet now?
Uh, Bill, Scott, Aaron Lucic, uh Scott Admature and Tracy Thompson.
Okay.
All right, do you feel comfortable? Yeah, because they're involved in so much. Do you feel comfortable with that, Mike?
Uh, it's not me. Yeah, I'm not uncomfortable with that.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Uh, keeping the group under about thirty, I think extended cabinet doesn't approach that value. It's about half that, isn't it?
It's just adding another five.
Yeah, it's like five more plus the people you see and Sue, so six more.
And Lori, make sure that Lori's included.
Oh, yeah, Lori.
Lori, Lori's up in the corner there. She just says off the screen always, there's her hand. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, you're talking about seventeen people.
And Jenny's not here, so that's another.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
You're right.
Twenty people, including admins or administrative assistants who might.
I I think Lori's probably it.
Yeah. Should be a work with that. It gives you three to four little breakout groups and I know teachers really like to break you out into little groups. The same way, and it was like that for the uh Leadership Clark County um in that they limit their size exactly for that reason. So we keep it to extended cabinet, but we can draw lessons from each other that um we can model for the rest of the organization. I think that's
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else to add to this conversation?
I'll add just one more thing, Victoria. So, um, because we're going to have to do it virtual in the beginning. I think that when we look at picking a, a group or a program, that it's something that lasts over some time, that it's not just a let's get together for one or two Zoom meetings and then we'll be done with it. I think it really has to be meaningful work that, that lasts. And so we can keep building on our successes as we go through the program.
Okay.
I agree. It's the work of at least a, a year. Well, half.
Well, and it'll.
Here, I, I could see us continuing this work during our retreat in the summer, for example.
Yeah. And it'll be rolled into the other work that we're doing. So. Yeah. Okay. That sounds great. Okay. Mike and Rob, you got a legislative update?
Yeah, I was just gonna really quickly, I sent some emails out in the last few weeks about HB 1476 that there was hope around that from the perspective of the enrollment opportunities that, that we could use 1920 enrollment. And then there was some thought that nothing was going to happen with the bill. Wasn't even going to get a hearing. And so there was a lot of pushback across the state, I think, in terms of just advocates advocacy for having a hearing. They actually had a hearing today. At 3:30 this afternoon, the House Appropriations Committee, and I was slated to testify, but the meeting went quite a bit longer than they had intended. The virtual meetings are, I'm sure Rob's participated in some of these. I'm not sure if anybody else has, but these virtual meetings are quite interesting to watch and participate in, and they've got to be really well managed in order to try to get through them relatively quickly. So I think that that's got to be frustrating for them. I ended up submitting written testimony and the written testimony was around the importance of, of not only hopefully passing 1476, which basically says for the 2021 school year, you would use 2019, 20 enrollment figures, actual enroll, actual enrollment, I guess for the the simulated enrollment for the year 2019, 20 with 2021 formulas on basic ed, on CTE, on special ed, on ELL, on highly capable. And if you received more money than in that recalculation, then the federal money that's coming through in the stimulus bill, the state would provide the, the difference. I don't really believe that we would be in a position for 2021, that that number would be greater than the federal stimulus amount of money that we, we're going to receive. And my sense of the federal stimulus is if it hasn't already been approved, it's going to be approved to distribute those funds to us here in the next week or two, if it hasn't already occurred. So for 2021, it's, it's, you know, the federal money's coming, it's going to kind of help us. But for 2122, it also extends into 2122. To me, that's the most significant part of the bill. As well as the fact that it uses 1920 enrollments in calculations for levy equalization for effectively the levy lid, which doesn't really affect us, the levy equalization calculation does. And then also for LAP. It, it, right now, as we start building the budget for 2122, you know, without the certainty of using 1920, we are put in a position of either having to start planning for this year's numbers with a little bit of growth, or maybe what we had budgeted, thinking we would have hit the budget for night for 2021, if it wasn't for the pandemic. And building the, the enrollment, effectively what the 1920 enrollment allows us to do is build the budget. It gives us kind of two years to get ourselves back to some sort of normalcy without having to deal with you know, some of the negative fallout, whether it's, you know, if you over budget, that can be an issue. If you under budget enrollment, that could be an issue. Either way, it makes it difficult. So I submitted testimony. What I'm hearing from Melissa is they think that they'll just end up dealing with this in the budget, that they likely may not pass the, the either this bill or the Senate bill around trying to fix the transportation funding formula. Both of those issues, if they're dealt with through the budget, the problem for us is that it pushes out the fix until maybe late April. And, you know, we're quite a ways into our staffing and our budgeting by that point in time. So we're going to maybe have to make some determination as to what we do with respects of staffing. And so anyway, that, that's, that, that's, it's a big, it's a big one. Rob can probably speak to the waiver bill, but I believe the waiver bill is going to end up getting passed, providing more opportunities for kids. I think that it's a frustrating session for the legislature because of the remote nature, just as if it's frustrating for all of you and has been for the last year, is very difficult to, to get the work done of hearings and executive sessions of bills and these types of things remotely. And so there's just a lot of frustration around it.
So, yeah, we talked to that waiver bill. It's it's sitting in Senate rules right now. So it's already gone through the entire house and the Senate Education Committee and is, is, looks like a faster track than I thought it would be. So that's kind of a piece of good news. I think the transportation bill is, I look for, do you remember the number, Mike?
It's a Senate bill and I can't, I'm looking through my stuff. 5128.
5128 is the comment, I guess that I have about 5128 is that the entire state is leaning on Mike to understand this. According to our lobbyist, it's like, he's got the expertise needed in order to understand why the formulas for transportation are not going to drive the revenue that, you know, meets the requirements. Or at least the strongly implied recommendations and standards that the state has been publishing about learning this year.
Yeah. So the, 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 the issue with that, the bill, it says that they'll fund either 70 or 80% of the previous year alloc, the allocation that was expected. If we don't have that, and I think I kind of shared it in one of our earlier meetings, we transported, I think 985 kids in the fall and 1400 and some kids in the winter, in the January count. Normally we transport 21,000 kids in those two, you know, so it's a real fraction of what we transport. And the, the, let's say we're supposed to get 16 million, the funding formula might only generate maybe half of that. So if, if that were the case, the, the issue with this, the enrollment stabilization, it doesn't even talk about transportation. Cause I think the expectation is that transportation would effectively be covered through the federal stimulus dollars. But for us, the basic at enrollment, if you look at 1920 enrollment in the, in the 1476 bill, between the enrollment and the probably in excess of 22, 23 million in funding lost, and we may get around 18 million from the Fed. So we could generate some stabilization money if that were the case. So yeah, the transportation thing is real problematic. And in both of these situations, the longer they wait to, to make some sort of determination, it puts more pressure on us to make a decision on what are we going to budget? Are we going to budget enrollment that looks like we think it might take a chance that they don't fund it? And then what happens if enrollment isn't what it is, you know? So there, there's just a lot of, and then the other side is if, if you under budget enrollment and you end up potentially having to reduce some staffing to do that. And then, and then the kid, then at the last second, they end up, yeah, we're going to go with the 1920, we've gone through this process. That's a very painful and difficult process for our staff to have to go through. We've gone through it, what, three, four of the last five years? I mean, it's, it's not a good process to go through. That's why it would be helpful for them to just kind of address these issues and, and and hopefully pass these bills. So anyway, Rob, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, it was all valuable information. I was just going to say, the transportation bill is scheduled for its executive session on, on the 11th. Two days. And they'll either do pass or do not pass out of that and it'll go to the Senate floor. With that recommendation, I think, or they kill it. I, I, there's a chance it could die in that committee still. So I, I think our advocates are working both of those as hard as they can. The one you sat in, the one, the one that you attempted to give verbal testimony for is also a Senate bill, isn't it?
That was a House bill.
That was in House Appropriations then.
Yes.
And yeah, there's been some concern about that. I only have one other thing to sort of talk about, about this. I could repeat the confidence is Melissa's doing a really good job for us this year in my, in my view. It's really strange for all legislators. And in spite of all the rhetoric, they're still coming up with bills that seem like, seem like they could be a lower priority, but that could be dependent on the lens that we have on things. But there was a bill presented to me to, for, to respond to about ranked choice voting. That, just for one example, contained a clause in it that would charge a public agency up to $30,000 of research costs if somebody were to raise a, an issue with the Washington Voter Rights Act and the way that we're doing our districting or the way that we're conducting our elections. And they do the research and they incur costs, they can recover that from the sub municipality or the special district and it seemed like we might have some objections to the way that was structured originally and, and it's getting into the committees. Instead of action on the funding, passing through the SRFunds or whatever is necessary for us to continue operating in a pandemic. Here's the thing I need to show you is that we're used to these Bill Watch type documents from years past, used to be, you know, huge sheaves of paper that Superintendent Dieter would, would hand us all. And what WASDA has done for our work is they have a Bill Watch list and you can go on the WASDA website and see that. What they're also beginning to give us is this. It's the hello?
You're there.
Am I there?
Yeah. Screen sharing hasn't started yet though. There you go.
No, and it won't. It won't. It'll. Do not, don't. Okay.
There you are.
There you are. It's like, where did he go?
Rob, I went away. I got like five error messages for trying to share an Excel document.
It was a vanishing app there.
And instead of all those rows of bills that might or might not have action, Marissa Rathbone condensed it to a line of 44 and color coded it as she called it exec and referred the bills that have gone to the floor or are, are scheduled to go to the floor during this half of things. And then color coded others as scheduled for their executive session or scheduled for a hearing. And one that needed advocacy to move and the one that needed advocacy to move was a Senate bill that's sitting in Ways and Means 5128 about transportation, which is I think the number we talked about just now.
Yeah.
And then the other one was the 1476 that we just talked about. That went out as an alert and I don't know if everybody's getting those alerts from WASD, like please send advocacy for these bills, but it would be, if not, I'll just forward it to everybody as I get it. And so I'm curious about that.
Good.
Are you guys getting those emails or not?
I'm getting them.
Yeah, okay. Well, you're on the WASD lists.
You are a board member now, Julie. You're kind of a big deal.
I don't know about that, but I'm getting the, the emails.
So I'm in the know.
I'll send this February 4th spreadsheet, but they update this with the Legislative Committee every Thursday night. And so I can send this kind of thing out to everybody every Thursday night and we can see what advocacy we might need to push on that might go beyond what Melissa is doing and with Mike.
I think it's great because I agree with Rob. I mean, Melissa's very dialed in. She's got a lot of really good connections, but I think that the WASD people are working really well together. So it's, it's nice to have it coming from both sides. I mean, I know that she does a really good job of mobilizing Southwest Washington, but I think WASD has done a good job of mobilizing the whole state to try to help with those, those types of advocacy efforts. So it's, I think it's working pretty good and Rob communicates with Melissa directly. He sometimes gets stuff, forwards it to us and, and, and we have conversations or Rob and Melissa talk about some of the things that are going on. And so I think it's been pretty good.
Yeah. And I know Mike's been meeting with legislators, getting more meetings than I could given my own schedule and so I think, I think we've got everybody in the loop for expressing the needs of the kids and families as we go on. And we're seeing a lot, I think, I think we're seeing a lot more synchronicity with the asks, with a couple of notable exceptions, but the labor groups, the PSEs and the WEAs of the state are also asking for the same kinds of relief or, or legislation. And there's, I, my sense is that there's just more of that in common today than there might've been four or five years ago. You know, small blessings. Let's.
Yeah.
Let's take the alignment while we've got it and celebrate each other, I think, is the idea.
Yeah.
And then when we focus on our differences, we can do it in good faith.
Sounds good.
And that's what I have.
That's all I got too.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, we're going to have a mini break here so that we can go into executive session. So we can close this one out and then.
I'll open the other one.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Thanks to everybody for being with us tonight. I appreciate it a lot.